Good evening, everyone. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to the regular meeting of the Board of Education tonight, Tuesday, November 12th. We will have two closed sessions at the end of the meeting, or one combined closed session. There will be no action taken at that meeting. Assistant Superintendent Ellis is missing tonight. Please keep his family in your thoughts and prayers with the death of his father. If you, per Board policy, would like to speak at public comment, the rule is, on your way into the meeting, please do so, fill out the form, so we have a few extra minutes. Tonight, our student showcase is Eagle Scout Nick McManus.
Hi, hello, my name is Nick McManus, and I am a junior at Celine High School. First, I would like to thank you for allowing me to share my Eagle Scout project with you tonight. To give a little background, I've been in Boy Scouts since I was eight years old. One value I have learned is that volunteering and giving back to the community is something I want as part of my life. This Eagle Scout project not only allows me to follow my life, oh, is something I want to, I want to be a part of my life. This Eagle Scout project not only allows me to follow my values, but is a gift I want to leave my community as a way to have fun for years to come. For my project, I am purchasing and assembling life-size games and building a storage unit for games. This will include building wooden shelves to go in the shaft. This project is for community groups such as young adults, special needs, preschool, or anyone who has permission through the Community Education Department to use in the courtyard here at Liberty School. I am still in the fundraising stage and would like to share a few ways I could use some help. Anyone can donate to my GoFundMe page, donate drinks or snacks from my concession stand fundraiser, or donate their recyclables so that I can turn them in for money. I hope to complete this project by January of next year and then officially become an Eagle Scout before my 18th birthday in May. Thank you again for this opportunity to share my project with you tonight. I am excited for the day, I can see the games being used in the courtyard here at Liberty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment: A member of the public may address the Board briefly for up to three minutes by filling out the how-to address the Board of Education form that is provided prior to each meeting. Please note, Board of Education members will not respond directly to public comment. Public comment will be limited to 30 minutes at the first session. Those needing additional time should request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting via the superintendent. Individuals addressing the Board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a Board member, district employee, community member, or student. Tiffany Hayward.
I'm a few people from An Arbor to be myself, and I've never been here. This is my husband, David. My daughter started Celine High School last year. I've been here for about six and a half years. She's now a fifth grade student in the school, and very pleased. That's my husband, David, my little one who will enter kindergarten next year. My daughter is at home panicking over her school. I'd like to start off by gratefully thanking the school board for protecting the civil rights of these students. This is one of the most serious issues that we're fighting right now. Transgender students, non-binary students at the highest places will decide with anybody in the country. The false fear of these children is rooted in nothing but hatred and disrespect. That's all it is, that's all it is bound to, that's all it will ever come down to. Oh, sure. So, I, again, I'm incredibly grateful for the support these students are receiving. I just found out about this, so I apologize a little over the place. I literally found out about this two hours ago. So, I really have not prepared anything, this is just from over 20 years of added busy work, added busy work that should no longer have to be done. After seeing this on posts, my family, we are deeply concerned because we recognize the type of impact this type of extremely negative pressure can have on schools. Schools want to keep all parents happy, we want to protect all students. So, again, I am very grateful, and with over 20 years, I have a great deal of resources to support this community. Just as a backup, I have emailed every contact I have, including two out-of-state groups, including two friends of mine who work at the ACLU, who all stand ready to support these students, if there's one student or 2,000, doesn't matter. We're here to lend as much support as we need, as this is an incredibly important issue. I thank you, how much longer?
30 seconds, Mark.
So, I thank you for listening. I am poised to continue to support these students, and anybody who would like to stick together with me for any reason, whether they support or disagree, I'm right there. Thank you.
Julia Blau.
Hello, my name's Julia Blau. I'm an alumna of Celine High School class of a very long time ago. I went to the first school in Celine. I now live in Ann Arbor. I have two children, one of whom is transgender and is here with me tonight. I'm here to show my support for all the LGBTQ kids in Celine. And I'd like to just sort of give a little comparison to what we have in Ann Arbor. The Ann Arbor Public School Policy 5011 addresses transgender identity and protects children against bullying, respects their privacy, respects their preferred name and pronoun, allows them access to the facilities that they, with the gender they identify with, and supports the gender they identify with. And I think the privacy and confidentiality is going to be an issue tonight, I suspect. It's very important. It's important that kids be outed by themselves. If they want to be out, great, if they don't, that is also their right. And it's no one else's business what's in some child's underwear. So, my experience in Ann Arbor Public School with my daughters in eighth grade is that we have had no problems. We have not had a single parent come and say, you know, your child is wrong, bad, anything like that. We've been supported by every teacher, every administrator, every coach. The name change has gone smoothly, and it's wonderful, and I think that Celine deserves nothing less than that. Thank you.
Superintendent Greeden, Dr. Ratch, trustees, elected trustees of our Board of Education. I come before you tonight disappointed beyond measure at the secrecy under which this policy change has taken. I understand student policy, student privacy, confidentiality is important. But if you're sitting there thinking that it's okay to violate somebody else's privacy without their knowledge and consent, you are greatly mistaken. Whether by your choice, or because this came to your knowledge recently, because others have chosen to keep it a secret from you, this is an astonishing lack of leadership and organization. And I am disappointed in schools. I want to be crystal clear. I support all students, including LGBTQ and other students, persons of color. I want them all to have the finest education. When we have to balance their rights and they conflict with the rights of others, you have to make a decision with the parents. You are elected by the citizens of the state, of this school district. You are charged to carry out the safety and education of the children of our next generation. Years ago, you tried to pass Planned Parenthood Designed Curriculum as Sex Ed. And you got so far, and then you fell because you discovered your community was not backed yet. Last year at this time, you presented to all of the elementary school children a book, which was not backed by the parents. Forty percent of the students of the elementary schools either opted out or were absent that day to boycott. Not just the book, and not the people who identify with the book, but the decisions that led to that without parental input. You've introduced other books, and you've told me that you will not tell parents that those books talk about masturbation, other sexually explicit things. They won't tell you, you won't tell us, parents, that the books you're teaching to 11-year-olds contain pornographic references and medical transition, hormonal transition to 11-year-olds. Hello.
Thanks, Ed.
I appreciate your work, and I hope that you think about this very carefully.
Darcy Burwood.
Darcy Burwood, impressed with that, it's been a while. I'd like to say that confidentiality is not just important, it's actually second. So, seek first to understand. So, I went into a little background research. Now, our education system is informed by a lot of federal legislation, such as Everest Student Success, FERBA, Title 279, Civil Rights Act, IDA, FOIA, et cetera. This list is not exclusive. The Michigan educational legislation was first ratified in 1927, overhauled in '55, and overhauled again in '76. And it's been amended six times since then. It currently has over 540 sections of codes. At the local level, Celine schools have its own bylaws, which I'm sure you all are familiar with. There's over 800 policies in there. And then we have student handbooks to each of our schools. Now, what all that says to me is that as our world changes, and our understanding of it does, so do we. Because we learn and we adapt, and because education is at the forefront of everything that we do all day long, every day. So, how does a school district balance those thousands of sometimes overlapping rules, regs, and policies with thousands of families, different sets of heartfelt values? And do what's in the best interests of every single student in our district? I don't know. It seems like a Sisyphean, yet crucial challenge. I think it would be an egregious understatement of me to say that the depths and breadth of jobs as teachers, administrators, and trustees are difficult and complex. So, seek first to understand, but then seek to be understood. And this is what I want you to understand for me. That I appreciate that you value the safety and security of all of our children. They appreciate that you already have policies and procedures in place to protect every single one of our students from bullying, harassment, violence, discrimination. They appreciate that you have policies and procedures in place to engage students and their families without overstepping anyone's confidentiality. And that confidentiality is key to ensuring a student's open and honest communication with our educators, educators who care for and about our children. And this is what you want, teachers, administrators, and trustees, right? Because in fact, it's what you need to create a safe and secure school for our kids, their teachers, our families, and our communities. So, if you fail at protecting any one child's confidentiality, you risk not only that child's safety and security, but everyone else's as well. Please continue the tradition, exceptional excellence that we are known for here in Celine. Thank you.
Michelle, sorry, my last name, Sherry.
Hi, definitely unpronounceable. The last time that I spoke to the school board, I came to say thank you for recent efforts at transparency and involving parents in other decisions, and just in a few other small ways, just taking steps to make sure the community was involved. I come here tonight, though, to express disappointment, to feel that that problem is not enough help. I'd like to reference the first mom who spoke, the mom of Celine High School. I love that she said that she's interested in protecting civil rights. I feel that I am too. I love, too, that she said, the speaker who spoke said she values safety and security for every one of our children. I also value that. I have a brother who's gay, my neighbors are gay. I do have a love for the people who are different than me. However, that's also a double-edged sword. But as we seek to protect the rights of those who are different in some ways, we also have the need to protect those who are on the other side of that. And so, yes, we need to value the safety and security of LGBTQ students. Yes, we do. But we also need to value the needs and the concerns of other students. And if one is sacrificed for the cause of the other, that is a system that is not fair and is not just. And especially if it's done without even a shred of communication with the parents, students in situations like that. I too am disappointed, and I know that this school system has done better and can do better in the future. I love that the speaker who spoke is seeking to understand and seeking to be understood. I agree that there's a need for that. I really hope that we can all come together to make sure that each and every student is protected. But please remember, we need to protect the LGBTQ students, but we also need to protect every one of us, too. Please do not sacrifice the rights of one, just protect the rights of another. Thank you.
Dawn Kraus.
Hi, I'm Dawn Kraus. Grew up in Celine, graduated in 88, 1988, that is, a long time ago. Went away, lived in Ann Arbor for a while, came back five years ago after my Sunday. I want to thank the Board. I know it's not easy doing what you do, hearing this, saying this, seeing this, over and over again. But what I really want to thank you for, and I have to write because I can talk all night, those of you who know me know that, so I'll get your little thing ready. I'm sorry. Anyway, so what I really want to say is thank you for having a locker room policy that is inclusive, that follows state best practices, that allows trans kids access with the facilities aligned with their gender. I acknowledge some of the concerns that we've heard in the public. I just, side note, I'm deeply embedded in Celine. Just ran Kendrick Lamar's Sulex campaign successfully, because he got on, so I think it's successfully. But I'm not claiming to know everybody in Celine, but the numbers represented are very, very inaccurate. The majority of this town supports what you are doing, regardless of some of the other numbers that are out there floating around. I just want to make that very clear. I've lived here, I grew up here, I'm in the know. I don't claim to know everything, but trust me, those numbers are not as they are presented. What I want to say is, I do acknowledge that some of the concerns others have had about transparency and privacy, and suggest that maybe those concerns would be best dealt with by publishing and advertising the policy, making it very clear to everyone that anyone who feels uncomfortable changing in a particular facility, for whatever reasons, can be afforded other accommodations, similar to what Ann Arbor has done. Again, not claiming that Ann Arbor to be perfect by any means. But in this particular case, they are proud of their policy and they publish it. It's well-known, there is no secrecy. I'm not saying that's what happened here, but people know about the policy. The schools, as you know, you have a legal and ethical duty to keep the identity of trans students private. And sometimes, unerringly, decisions can be made that don't quite do that. And I know that's not the intent, but you just have to be careful, I'm sure you already know that. Sometimes, how you respond to certain demands for notice and disclosure might walk that gray line a little bit. Current interpretation of civil rights law luckily is on our side. Interpretations under current civil rights law says that no transgender student should be forced to use a changing facility that is incongruent with their gender identity. So, luckily, we do have law and recent case law on our side. Federal judges have been upholding many of the lawsuits brought, and we are very thankful that the law is seemingly trending towards our side, if not there already. There is no place in my hometown for transphobic fear-mongering, using words like "forced to undress" that we've heard floated in the community, which is not accurate, complete with disinformation and intentionally inflammatory garbage, no room.
Jeremy Camero-Sula.
I was just informed of this meeting today, like, an hour and a half ago or so, I remember. But it came, and it really hit deep, and really came too close to home. So, I really felt that I needed to be an advocate for this. Celine is one of the greatest schools, it's in the top 15 in Michigan, of course. And you guys are doing really well, being advocates and supporting. But there are many things that could be addressed, but I'm not going to, I have not the time to say those things. I am trans, of course. Gender hormones are about, I'm here, so I can't remember. But of course, I still get backlash, and I still get called things that are not okay. And the gender neutral bathrooms and facilities, they are great. And, yes. But, of course, I had to leave Celine because of these kinds of things, because in multiple incidents, they got locked. And I had to go into gym with my binder on. It is female-to-male binders, you can look them up, I'm not going to explain what they are. Because many will think that it is not appropriate to explain. But it is a very dangerous thing to exercise in, and it can crush your internal organs if your ribs can crush them. That's why exercising with demand is not okay. But that's why there needs to be made one for them, for gender-neutral ones' facilities. But I'm still very grateful that you guys are accepting these things for this reason. But it's just extremely upsetting that we have to have this meeting in general. Because humans are humans. Trans rights are human rights, women's rights are human rights. And we are the next generation. Everyone should be treated equally, no matter what is in their pants. They are who they are. Thank you.
Paige Kadash. Sorry, Abby.
I first want to start out by thanking the school board members for encouraging students to speak today. It's really important to hear student voices and voices of our community. I know a school board member came up to me after I spoke the last time at a school board meeting and said that I should speak the next time, that the school board messed something up. Now, I actually come today not to talk about what the school board has quote-unquote messed up, but what you guys are doing well today. You are including trans students and making them feel valid and safe in Celine High School and in Celine area schools. This is extremely important. In a world that often invalidates trans identities and trans rights, Celine High School is on the right side of history. Celine High School is trying to make accommodations for the students who have these queer identities and are making sure that these students feel safe in Celine High School. Now, to narrow down some of the policies that I'm going to talk about today, first, I want to talk about the bathroom, overnight stay, and locker room policies. Now, from what I've heard so far, Celine High School's policy on this is that students can use, students will be rooming with and use the bathrooms of those who they feel that identifies as their gender or those who feel are the most comfortable. Now, I know one of my friends personally, he is rooming with me for one of our overnight trips with the marching band because he feels more comfortable rooming with me in that room, and that is the best situation for introvert discrimination. But he uses the male restrooms at Celine High School because that is very validating for his identity. I have heard no instances of where he has abused this power in any sort of way. I do not feel uncomfortable rooming with a student at Celine High School. I'm completely okay with this. I was asked by administration if this was all right with me, and I said yes. I have never heard of any instance at any Celine area schools where this has ever been an issue. Because simply, why would a student lie about their own identity? Because all they would face would be discrimination. There's never, ever been an instance of a student abusing this policy. So, there is no reason to cut the policy, simply because those are, people are worried about those abusing the policy. It has never been abused, there's no empirical evidence of this. Therefore, it should not be repealed in any way. Because it is more important that students feel comfortable and valid in their identity than maybe the very, very obscure chance that anyone would abuse this policy. And then, I would like to bring forth the point that if anyone were to abuse this policy, he would immediately be reprimanded. And I know you all would reprimand this with the strongest possible punishment. It is so important that we validate trans students' identities. Celine High School wants to be on the right side of history. Celine area schools should always be advocating for those of queer identities. Because when history looks back at it, we are going to see that Celine area schools was on the right side. And because of this, we should really keep putting into place this policy. Write it down somewhere, make it extremely known. That would maybe help the lack of transparency that we see. Make sure that you're making the choice that is on the correct side of history. Thank you.
I'm going to go over the 30 minutes, since there are only three more. And I will remind the public that we should fill out the form on our way in. There are rules, and they are subject to the chair's discretion. But ideally, we'd like to have comment on items that are on the agenda tonight and not get into a rebuttal debate during the Board's business. So, Lisa Slossen, number nine.
Hello, Board. I'm Lisa Slossen, a parent, and I used to be on the Board for a long time. So, I'm going to take your advice. And the first thing I'm going to say is, we are a fortunate parent of Celine to have. fortunate parent, so we need to have, and I have personal experience with this from both my children, one of the finest educators, I think, in the country, his name is Brian Lang, and he's going to talk to you tonight about a race and ethnicity course, and he is one of the most forward-thinking, wonderful people that I encountered in all my time in this district. And, doing measures like this, empowering our amazing teaching staff to go forward with programs like this, makes this place an even better place than it is today. So, I want to commend him and all the teaching staff that are out there in the trenches, fighting the fight, and doing what's best for our kids. As to the issues that we've been talking about the last couple of minutes, back in 2010, this board, President Heidi, myself, Mr. Grayden, Mr. Latch, we were here for lots and lots of anger, fear, ignorance about the LGBTQ community. And everybody was like, oh, if we give gay kids rights, oh gosh, that's going to be awful. So now, it's 2019, and it's like, well, we like gay kids, but we don't want to talk about trans kids. In 2030, you know, with Mr. Grayden still here, we'll talk about another issue at that time. So these are cyclical, and they just keep coming up, they tend to be, you know, reflective of the times we're living in, i.e. our president, I'm not going to say anymore about that. But, it angers me when people come up here and use words like "the board's lying," "the board's not transparent," "the board's not doing this," "this was a complete and total shock." This is a school district that is a world-class school district. I've never seen a school district more transparent. I've never seen a school district that is more involved and cares about our kids. So, I am going to just call that out, and I'm going to say, that's a lie. It's just a lie, plain and simple. Celine's job, Mr. Grayden's job, all these lovely people here, their job is to protect our kids and to do what's best for them. And if, in their esteemed knowledge, they think that it's the right thing to do is to, you know, include trans kids in this, then I trust them, because they're educators, I'm not. You know, these posts on Celine posts, you, people need to think about safety first. These are children. These are children. Please, don't go to social media first. Bother Mr. Grayden, bother Mr. Latch, bother Mr. Raff, bother Mr. Beesu, call Paul, bother them, and then, when you get no response, then you can go to social media. It's dangerous. You are saying that these kids should be singled out. This is not plain and simple, this is wrong. No gay kid is going to attack your kid in the locker room. No trans kid's going to attack your kid in the locker room. Not going to happen. These are kids. This is a school district, this is a non-political body. Let's start acting like the only thing we're here for is to protect every single kid in this city. Thank you.
Members of the board and fellow Celine P members, my name is Jacob Salanta. I'm a Celine Ann Arbor resident. Growing up, I attended Celine area schools, and I graduated from Celine High School in 2018, so Harvest, Celine Middle School, and right now. It has come to my attention that Celine area schools will be enacting a new policy allowing students who claim to be transgender to use the restroom or locker room of their choice. I see this policy as an infringement of fellow student privacy, dignity, and personal space within their facilities. Locker rooms are where students conduct personal business, change clothes, and other matters that require privacy. Every student deserves a right to a private space. Compromising that in the name of inclusion achieves the opposite. It would not be fair or ethical to allow a thirteen-year-old boy who simply claims to be of the opposite sex, a decision that isn't even fully comprehended at that age, I might add, to then share that space with other middle school girls. As a Celine community member and former student, I voiced my opposition to this policy. In line with biology and basic science, students are accused of the locker room, bathroom, or changing room of their biological gender. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everyone. That will conclude the first part of public comment. Administration.
Just a couple of quick updates. One, I would like to thank our grounds crew. Yesterday was a challenging day for them. Obviously, they were prepared, but certainly caught off guard with the amount of snow and the opportunity to get that moved prior to the end of school. But I do applaud all of their efforts and their continued work. Weeks away from what I would consider to be the true winter season, and so, kind of, here we go. Had the opportunity, as many of you know, I'd like to thank the community members and board members who were able to attend the showing of Screenagers that occurred in the evening. I think that went very well, and was one of the better-received opportunities for us to engage in the conversation around technology and its impact on our communities and our families. We also use that movie during the day with students, and I will tell you, the tool that worked well with parents did not work well with students. And so, that was a learning opportunity for us as administration, that as we look at this conversation and kind of creating dialogue around it's important, we use the right tool with the right crowd, and so, we look to get better and improve on that next time. Lastly, I have my first community compass and coffee meeting with the Harvest staff, and so it was great to have a chance to get some feedback as to how the school year is going in their eyes, and I look to continue that with other buildings between now and the end of the calendar year. So, that's all I have.
Board members.
Well, we had MASP conference was this last weekend, and so, it was really good for us. Went up there, we'll each share a little tidbit of what we appreciated, but I can tell you, one of the things that we all kind of got takeaways, but one of them that I was pretty surprised with was our legislators said that education was not a priority to them. They're not hearing it from the community that education and funding for education is important, and so, I think we all need to do a better job as a community to be talking to our legislators and making sure that they know that education is a priority.
Absolutely. Totally agree. It was my first MASP conference, I was glad you talked to us about it. Look forward to participating and learning more next year. The session that kind of stuck with me was actually on athletics and fundraising and bond, it was the superintendent of Adrian Schools, but my big takeaway from that was how you get community involved in fundraising, revenue generation, obviously, we've been talking a lot about that on the finance committee, and how you involve all stakeholders in large projects, so that was good.
Go ahead, Michael. Do you have a brilliant takeaway?
Oh, I do, but, go ahead, he presented.
All right, I have a few points. Yeah, I also, I was one of the Fab Four who was in Traverse City this weekend as well, and I sadly did not attend any presentations, I was giving one, but I did attend, at the beginning, the keynote, it was quite interesting, he talked about social-emotional learning and the power of that, and how, gave us a very good, deep, and very fast background, and strongly recommended that we have a social-emotional learning team in each of our districts. We have something like that, I think, don't we? We do. I was also at a conference just two days before in Niagara Falls, the Educational Computing Organization of Ontario, and I heard some truly hair-raising stories, almost, about permission forms and so forth. Canadian law is just a little bit different than the American law, but I'm going to have some quiet conversations with our legal people here. The presentation I made up in Traverse City was called "The New Alphabet of Educational Technology." We were talking about AR, AI, VR, and if I have to explain those to you, then you should attend the next time I give a presentation. Also, I wanted to say, I was at the Screenagers night as well, and the four students who spoke up, we had two middle school students, two high school students, were you one of them, Evan? Very, if all of our students are as articulate, then we are in good shape. We can just sit back and let it all happen. No, they were brilliant, they were poised and excellent speakers, and the last thing I wanted to say, four of us were at Career Day, right? And, what a great, what a great opportunity to chat with our eighth graders, I think it was eighth grade, wasn't it? Seven, six?
I think six, it was eighth.
Oh, I was eighth graders, and we had a lot of fun with them. So, great students, great to be in touch with them. That's all I have to say.
All right. So, I guess I have a couple of things. Michael did a fantastic job. I seen him in a totally different role than I've ever seen him before, and he was super excited. Me and Heidi were able to go to that, and I can tell that it's your passion, and it was, like, everybody was engaged, so, great job.
Thank you. I dial it way down, I guess, when I come here, right?
A little bit, yeah. But yeah, good job.
Thank you.
So, I went to, Heidi and I were there for the full conference, the full three days, and there was just, I mean, I'm still trying to process all of the great information that I've learned, but, and networking, was it five hundred, I believe we had, of school board members, admins, superintendents, and so, it was really great to network. Some of the presentations that I personally attended was about diversity, equity, and inclusion. The Ferndale schools have did an amazing job. They had a consolidation with, like, mostly African-American students, and so the percentage went, I believe it was like fifty-plus percent, and so they've really worked on DEI efforts there. Implicit bias, and also, the Michigan Department of Education presented on gender-inclusive schools. Also, super excited about this, the delegate assembly voted and a resolution for the, so the Michigan Association of School Boards strongly supports the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act. The thing that was added, they also believe the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act should be updated to include sexual orientation and gender identity and expression. So I'm really excited about the Department of Education and the school boards really supporting students, LGBTQ students, and their schools across the state who are there with us, so. That is all.
Two big things. So, obviously, today we mentioned Screenagers film, the student response to Screenagers film was definitely not what we expected as a wellness committee, and so, what we're going to have to do is...
What was the response? You and Seth would have mentioned it, so I was just curious.
So, during the viewing, students, not particularly one group of students, but as far as we know, all the students, at every grade level, would cheer at inappropriate times during the film, and very disruptive during the viewing. And, with discussion with some administration, we feel like the sections of the film specifically that were bothersome towards those that play lots of video games, they felt that they might have been alienating that a little bit, and, well, saying that these things are bad, and that we can work on our usage of these things versus like, these are bad, you shouldn't do them. So there was like a communication thing that needed to be worked out, and as a committee, what we should, what we're looking forward to now, as we're getting ready to meet for our second time in a few days here, is kind of sit back and learn from what we have, maybe take some info from some students, and kind of see moving forward how we can better implement films and other educational materials to the students. Other than that, we saw the League of Women Voters came in to register many of the high school seniors for voting. That was closer to our last meeting, but it was after that, so, that was really cool to see getting our students who are eighteen, able to vote, getting involved with the government process, of course, that's very important. Also, at the high school, we saw the trunk-or-treat event, that was, some freshman students got to trick-or-treat on Halloween at lunchtime for some seniors. It's always fun, it was good, no complaints, so we did well this year. We also saw Career Day at Celine Middle School, got to join Ms. Stubben, and we went to students to teach them about the school board and how we kind of, you know, govern the school district and help students, and I talked to them personally about how they can reach out to us, and if they have issues, you know, we're here to help them, we're here to represent them. So, we also saw the Celine Middle School Focus Group with Mr. Grayden. We sat down with a handful of students to kind of learn, you know, what do they like about Celine Middle School, Celine area schools, what do they not like, what are some things we can take back? We're learning about their reaction to policies that we put in place recently, so it's all good to hear information from the students, get feedback from them. Recently, at Celine High School, there's now a school newspaper, which is the first issue, the second issue was issued this year, the first being last spring. So that's pretty cool to see students involved with more journalistic type of English writing. I remind everybody that it was also Veterans Day recently, so we have to kind of acknowledge that, you know, we were here because of our veterans, and the way that they've served our country has allowed us to sit here, represent students, and participate. It's finals week at Celine High School, so students are still getting ready for finals, so that's been kind of hectic, kind of crazy, students always worried, like, how are they going to do, but I think it's going to go really well, lots of studying going on, especially in the hallways. There was the craft show hosted at Celine Middle School, very successful, there was a lot of student involvement, student volunteerism before then, setting up, and I did that, I myself participated in that, that was a lot of fun, and a great rollout as always. There was the SEMLAA Spelling Bee at Celine Middle School recently, very, very important, very good. And finally, I have the Choo for Charity event, which is Children, Kids Against Hunger campaign. So, let's start up recently, and as far as I know, the events are students chew gum, and they're chewing gum to raise money against student hunger, so, very good thing there. So yeah, those are my updates.
Thank you for applauding for that, because I just have to build up with what Evan said. He did a fabulous, fabulous job at Career Day, and I know, as he said, he was with Scott the day before doing Focus for the Middle School. You know, our session was really about, we talked a little bit about what is our day job, right? Well, we talked about volunteerism, and we talked about getting involved, and he shared some really great personal stories and interests, and the engagement that the students had with saying, I thought was very, very valuable. So thank you, Evan, I think that was great. The only other thing I wanted to add is, we had our Coalition for Quality Community meeting this month, the president of Washington Community College came and spoke with us, she was fabulous, and I have some materials to follow to give to Steve and Scott. We talked a little bit about what her biggest challenges were, and what the biggest challenges are in height and today, and not surprisingly, seventy-nine percent of college presidents said new sources of revenue are what's on top of their minds, and number one is, second to that is declining enrollment. So, a lot of similar themes that we were talking about, both in the school district and in higher education. Two big things coming up for Celine Area Social Services, and if you don't already have the information, which I'm sure you do, it'd be great to include it in the news and notes, we're doing a DACA family, Ann Cummings is doing that with Celine Area Social Services, and we're doing baskets for Thanksgiving and for Christmas, if anyone would like to participate knows within the community, and make sure that Steve has the information.
Response to public comment, just as a general rule, the district always has and always will follow every federal, state, and legal law, to the extent that is included in our policies, because they're all reflected on laws. So I would caution, I guess caution the general public that everything you read on the internet or on social media is not always true and factual. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So, move.
Support. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Those opposed with nay. Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Our first scheduled report is race and ethnicity course, Mr. Raff.
Yeah, we'll call him Principal Raffed up, and he'll allow him to introduce Schalantman and the class.
Schlatman and, uh, the class.
So, a year ago, um, December, you guys have been with a number of courses that were new electives at Saleen High School, uh, this one, we have a number of representatives from our Exploring Race and Ethnicity Course, which has taken off pretty well at Saleen High School, and so I'm gonna turn it over to Brian Lamon, he's a twenty-three-year veteran here at Saleen High School, starting at the time at middle school, went to Pioneer U of M, and now he's here with passion into his bloods, we can talk a little bit about the course he's got going.
So, pleasure to be here this evening, uh, Mr. Grayden, board members, thank you very much, and Mr. Raff, thank you. Um, my time in, in Saleen has always been marked by the, the importance of building relationships and the opportunity to work with such gifted, articulate, eloquent, amazing, thoughtful students, uh, committed to, to making the world a better place. And the opportunity to teach the Race and Ethnicity classes here has, has been a real blessing, it's brought me a great deal of joy, and just seeing how the students, um, have engaged in the, in the material has been, has been tremendous. Uh, the class was conceived as a way to, to create more awareness about issues of race and ethnicity, to stimulate discussion, um, to create action plans for our school and to develop that with the community as well, um, and to work towards more just practices in our society, uh, and to create a more anti-racist worldview, and, and I leave each day with just incredible joy in my heart, um, just seeing how, how my students care themselves and, and, and the work that they're doing. Uh, I wanna be very brief this evening and also I'm, uh, between meetings I do apologize, but I wanted the emphasis, even if I was here the entire time, to be on my students. Um, I'm gonna call different ones up, uh, the first one, uh, will talk about, you know, I'll introduce themselves when they come up, uh, talk about their story, um, and then, uh, building relationships with the middle school, uh, our work with Jalen Rose Academy, and, uh, finally maintaining momentum, which, if there's one thing I want you to think about tonight is, what can we do to be strategic and intentional in our efforts to move forward, um, discussions, awareness, understanding, um, about issues of race? So, I wanna turn it over to my students now.
Hi, my name is Sydney Washington, I'm a junior at Saleen High School and, um, I would like to let you listen to my story. So, the earliest I can remember in my life, I was three years old in this Christian school named Auburn Hills Christian School. There were about fifteen kids in my pre-K class and I was one of three black children in my class. Now, I don't remember everyone's names and faces, but there was one girl named Alana, who I'm still friends with to this day. My best friend Alana, she is biracial, biracial, her mom is white and her dad is black. I really had no concept of the word race and as a matter of fact, I never really thought of it at all. I never thought about the fact that her mom and dad were different colors, I just saw them as people, as her parents. I wasn't exposed to the meaning of race until I was about four years old, when I started to notice how I was different from my other class, white classmates. I noticed how some of them had their beautiful, straight, long hair and there was me with my curly hair with the typical black girl hairstyles. I started to realize how no one else really looked like me, there's been was light, mine was dark, I stood out. I wasn't like everyone else. I remember in the car, I told my mom, "I don't like bean chocolate, I wanna be vanilla." And then she proceeded to tell me how there's nothing wrong with bean chocolate and how all the flavors were equally as good. And that's when I started to realize, there's more than to just being a human, being a human, there are other races and ethnicities that made us different. Even after that talk from my mom, I still thought in order to be pretty and to fit in, you must have lighter skin. I practically lived by these, in these white and pink tights because they hid my dark legs. I only wanted to play with the white Barbies because they were prettier than the darker-skinned ones. At the time, Cinderella was my favorite princess because, um, she looked, oh, sorry. Um, because she had blonde hair and blue eyes and I aspired to be like her. I wanted to hide my black, my blackness so I feel like I can belong. Fast forward to elementary school, I moved to this public school called University Hills and although it was more diverse, it was still predominantly white, and from kindergarten to fifth grade, I remember being the only black girl in my class. Can you imagine that? The first ten years of your life, growing up, with very few people who looked like you, the first ten years of always being the odd one out, the first ten years being alone. And don't get me wrong, I had friends and super close relationships throughout my time there, but it wasn't until sophomore year that I met my first one-hundred-percent African-American friend at school. But going back to my elementary school years, I wore my hair completely natural, all the way up until fifth grade, when I had the opportunity to straighten my long, thick curls for the first time. When I got my hair straightened, it felt like a whole new world has opened up to me and I finally felt that I could fit in. It was almost like a sigh of relief. My hair looked like the other people with naturally straight hair, so now I fit in. Now people would stop coming up to me and start grabbing and touching my hair like an animal or asking me questions like, "How often do you wash it?" People will start treating me and seeing me as the same, and that was my mentality when I first straightened my hair. My hair was always very important to me and my mom always told me that I was blessed with long, beautiful curls and that a lot of people were killed to have the kind of hair that I have, and I took pride in that. Unfortunately, the only way I could take pride in that is when I was, when it was straight. To me, curly hair was ugly, curly hair made you different, no one likes big curly hair, straight hair was only acceptable. Straight hair makes you fit in and straight hair makes you beautiful. I can go on and on about how hair really has impacted the way I saw myself as an African-American, but that's for a different occasion. It wasn't until last year when I started to see that the trend of wearing your hair natural was in. I first saw this when I was on Instagram one day and I saw a girl brushing her natural hair with her, edgy slay and her curls just popping. From there, I just kept scrolling and looking up different videos and the following, and following different Instagram accounts dedicated to natural hair. For the first time since I was five, I saw that natural hair was beautiful, so after years of straightening my hair, a lot, a lot of curls were damaged over the summer, sorry. I tried, sorry. I decided to chop off my long, beautiful hair so I can start my natural hair journey. And it wasn't until last year when I took sports sociology, where I felt something click inside of me, that it was time to express my blackness and to be proud of who I am and to be proud that I am different, and wearing my natural hair was the first step of me being proud to be black. By me showing off my curls and styling the crown on my head shows that I'm proud to have hair like no one else and I don't need to straight, and I don't need straight hair to fit in. You'd be surprised on how many people came up to me and asked me why I was doing this all of a sudden, not many people frowned upon me because I was, in a way, turning myself into someone I'm not. But then I look back and I realize that those were the same people who also called me whitewashed or the whitest black person they've ever met, or an Oreo. To me, it feels like I get hate for trying to fit in and I also hate, get hate for trying to express my culture, and after many years, I just learned to deal with it. Growing up in a predominantly white community all my life, um, meant learning how to pick and choose your battles. Every day I experienced ignorance and micro-oppressions, and if I got upset over every little ignorant comment that I get on a daily basis, I would just get exhausted all the time. It's not fun when I have to brush it off and pretend it's no big deal, and I wish they would stop so I can catch a break, but I'm afraid that's not the world we live in right now and I hope that one day it will change and that more people will come aware and that more people will, will become educated, because I'm pretty sure most marginalized people are tired and exhausted just like me. And the last thing I'm gonna touch on is helping an African-American in a predominantly white community my whole life, is how people doubt my credibility of me, of me knowing what it's like to be oppressed, but here's the reality. My dad goes out in his sweatpants and sweatshirt with his hood up, I fear for his safety. When I travel with my mom, I notice the judgmental looks that we get because people assume that I have a deadbeat dad. I fear that one day that I, that I get pulled over by the police and instead of me being worried about getting a ticket, I'll be worried if I make it back home alive. When hanging out with my cousins in public, I see the scared looks from people assuming that we're aggressive, loud, or even dangerous. And even my old little brother being called the N-word at school multiple times and being told that he can't ride the bus or play with a group of grins because he's black. Having people assume that I'm not smart or see their surprised faces that I, that I tell them when I've been on the honor roll since sixth grade, and seeing people's confused faces when I tell them I like Backstreet Boys and not Jay-Z. I've been asked if I've ever been concerned about wearing the color black because of how it would clash with my skin. I've been told that I'm very pretty or a dark-skinned girl. People have even asked me if I was one of George Washington's slaves, since I was black and I had stained my nails in. The list can just go on and on, but just because I live in the suburbs and just because I go to predominantly white, white high school and just because I don't act like the stereotype of my race, doesn't mean I haven't experienced the same things as people like me who live in the hood, who live in predominantly, who go to a predominantly black high school, who are in our gangs or who live in poverty. It's quite upsetting how people think that I'm not valid and that I shouldn't be upset or offended because I'm privileged. And I shouldn't have to prove myself every time to show people that I, an African-American woman, go through the, go through the, sorry, go through these things, Dave, thank you.
Uh, hi, my name is Annie Farrell, I am a junior at Saleen High School and I am an ally and a student leader. And...
I'm Zach David, I'm a senior at Saleen High School and I'm a rising scholar, hoping to change the world. So, as Mr. Lamon mentioned, one of the things that we were able to do as our class was go down to the middle school and address some of these racial issues and some of these, overall issues that we are facing in society today. And we had the chance to sit down with our, our peers at the middle school and kinda worked out what they felt were the most pressing issues at, uh, in Saleen as a whole. And we sat there and we tried to figure out not only how to raise awareness for these, but how we can work to deter down these systems of oppression in our schools and in society. So I think it was very impactful to see that we're able to have these conversations, uh, with sixth and seventh graders and how, what that really shows about Saleen's curriculum and about, um, the forward progress that we've been making with this. And Annie's gonna talk more about some of the impacts and sort of future that we're gonna have, uh, with both these middle school students.
So, we went out to the middle school a couple weeks ago and they're actually coming back, um, I believe, um, the twenty-first, um, we come up to the high school, we're gonna meet with them again and address, uh, readdress the issues that we talked about with them. Um, specifically, when we went out to the middle school, we, um, all separated kind of new groups after the whole of activity and we brainstormed, drew some ideas for, um, this board that was created, um, by the All Means All Group, um, and it is outside, I was actually at the those end of the day for Cadet and it's put up, um, I was excited to see that that was like, very quick to happen, so like, change is like actually being made and that's like really cool to see. Um, so, we brainstormed, um, a bunch of ideas of what we wanted to do with this piece of art that is up in the middle school, um, and I'm excited to see what the All Means All Group decides to do with it and hopefully we can be a part, um, of continuing these relationships because these difficult conversations need to be happening, it, like, it's not just a high school thing, like, it needs to like go down into elementary school and start early.
My name is Nina Elzif, I'm a senior and I am an anti-racist leader. Um, and in our time spent with Jalen Rose Academy, uh, we went through some workshops and some exercises and some leaders from RISE, uh, where we talked about what it means, what the word diversity means and not just physical aspects, but internally and that we're all people and that we're all different people. Uh, we wanted to have more conversations with students at Jalen Rose, um, and where we highlighted the importance of continuing these conversations, continuing to connect to new people and continuing, um, the conversation of this. Oh, and Luke's gonna talk to you about our future also.
Alright, so one of the most important things that we can have referring to this work is that we need to sustain it, when we get going, we need to keep with it, and so that's why we wanna work with Jalen Rose in February, January, we're gonna meet back at Wayne State to have a more productive conversation about these topics, and we'll also meet with them at Michigan in May. And so, it's just really important to stick with it and just do what we can to bring these conversations up.
Hi, I'm Griffin, I'm a senior. Another important aspect of this class is having guest speakers, so recently we had two police officers from the Ann Arbor Police Department talk about, um, just like their day-to-day, like their perspective about, um, different topics within police work. And we've also had two other speaker, speakers, Mrs. Washington and Mrs. Campbell, who really just gave a more educational aspect to, um, race within the United States and gave like historical, um, viewpoint on that, so I think that's another really, um, important aspect of our class and what we're doing, so.
Hi, I'm Abby Rourke, my pronouns are she/her/hers, I'm also in Mr. Lattman's Race and Ethnicity class, although I'm in the fourth hour, so, well, there's other options, so I just wanna come and add, exciting the crowd, that Mr. Lattman's class is wonderful and amazing and I really wanna take it again, um, if that were possible, I don't even have to get a social studies credit for it because it's just really powerful and he's very passionate about what he does, and this is a class that is promoting change in education and hope for future generations and to be inclusive and I love it, so, thank you.
So, now we've provided, uh, hopefully a better understanding of what we've been doing, the Exploring Race and Ethnicity class, uh, with community involvement, having different conversations that need to be, need to be had. Uh, are there any questions that you guys had that we could ask?
Can you explain the All Means All thing at the middle school, cause I just heard and saw it, so...
So, the All Means All Club is a club that was started in the middle school, I believe, this year. Uh, it's focused on bringing people together and focusing less on our differences and more about what, um, what we have in common, the fact that we're all human beings, and it's about, uh, expressing diversity and celebrating diversity and working to address some of the social issues that are often associated with that and help to raise awareness and combat these issues.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. So first of all, thank you, I remain very impressed by all of the students in our district. And Sydney, thank you for sharing your personal story, I know that that was probably hard. Um, I was wondering how many people is in effects, right? So how many, how many sections are you running at the high school right now, how many students are you reaching in the classrooms?
We have two sections, about twenty-five of the students, um, and the biggest thing though is that while the conversations that we're immediately having are only affecting those sixty people, they are branching out and we're reaching in the middle school and reaching at different members of our community to try to make these more of a community-wide discussions, um, and so it's, the immediate impact is just the sixty people that are in the classes, but we're hoping to expand that impact and have an overall greater difference in our community because of that.
Yeah, and then to go off of that, one of Mr. Lattman's, like, what he always tells us is like, "Oh, your work doesn't stop here, like, take what I'm teaching you or what you're learning from each other and bring it out and have these difficult conversations, not just in my class." Um, and then, also, he has two sections of it this trimester, but, um, there's a lot of it in his middle class, so I know there are a couple more next try.
We've also extended it to another class, um, well-studied leadership at my school, uh, so I don't know if you're familiar, but there's a challenge, our, our local challenge, where we've also included, um, some stats on racial equities and inequalities, um, that is being projected around the school, um, so that's just another expansion of this class and what we're trying to do, so.
And even though the trimester's coming to an end, uh, we're still, we already have plans for, you know, about, with the end of November, we're gonna meet with the All Means All Club again, this kind of the high school, we have Dr. Richard Lapchek, a very, very prominent, um, social activist, social rights activist coming in, uh, December, we're planning on working with Jalen Rose Academy in January, February, and then meeting again, uh, in May to have some of these discussions about race, so, the, the class is coming to an end, but the impact of the class is gonna continue on, we're working really hard to sustain that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great chance.
Thank you. (applause) Thank you guys for giving us the platform to be able to do this and to have, uh, these conversations about race, to combat these racial inequalities in our community, this has definitely been a huge step forward for our community and we just wanna thank you for everything you've done and we look forward to working with, uh, with Saleen in the future and to make our community a better place as a whole.
Thanks, Seth.
(applause) I just, there's one more class, we're offering second trimester, and as you can tell, I, when either of our students speak, they really just tell the story of what's going on, they, it's really a great place to be and it's, the middle school, high school, doesn't matter, but our students actually are all leaders, and so I appreciate them all for being here tonight.
(applause)
Highlight of the evening, our audit report for finance.
Alright, Anthony, you're up, let's sit.
Now they're all leaving, sorry. Yeah.
We're very interested.
Yeah. Well, thank you and good evening.
So, as I was mentioning, Warthiem Moran, where the district's independent auditing firm, we're here to present the results of the school district's audit for the year end of June thirty of two thousand and nineteen. So there are three reports that are, uh, provided as part of our audit, there's the , uh, financial report supplemental information, which contains the district's audit financial statement, there's the federal award supplemental information, which is our separate audit of the federal programs administered by the district, and finally, there's a report of Warthiem Education, which provides information about the audit process and results. So the district's auditors, it's our responsibility to express an opinion on the financial statement, uh, based on audit conduct in accordance with lobbying standards generally set in the United States of America, and I'm happy to report here tonight that based on the results of our audit procedures, we've rendered what's called an unmodified or clean opinion on the district's financial statements. In our opinion, the financial statements are free from material misstatement, this would be the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can provide on a set of financial statements, and we're now gonna touch upon some of the financial... And we're now going to touch upon some of the financial highlights again for the year ending June 30th, 2019. A support to that, keep in mind that the activities of the district are recorded in several different funds. Show the particular expenditures for which the specific revenue sources are supposed to be used. Our presentation here tonight is going to focus on the general fund, as the general fund is the primary operating fund of the district, and with that, we'll go through key figures. Alright. Hi, my name is Anthony Stasniewski, I'm the manager on the audit for Selene Schools. I've been working with the district since I started public accounting almost seven years ago, so I've been here a couple of times, and although it sounds exciting maybe as everything else is going on, you know, this is what we live for, and we also wanted to express gratitude to Miranda and the finance team. Sometimes the finance department can kind of be the unsung heroes, that they make sure everything's running and everything's being paid for, everything's being accounted for, making sure there's enough money to bottom all the efforts the district has. So, I just want to say thank you to her team, they worked really, really hard this year. So the first slide we have here is the balance sheet of the general fund. Overall, you'll see both the assets and liabilities are up pretty significantly. A big high-level takeaway is that the majority of that, about one and a half million dollars, is due from and due to other funds, so it's kind of like intercompany receivables and payables, the things that carry us funds. So, we're looking at the trend year-over-year, you kind of take a million and a half out of that, which is kind of offsetting. Cash is up about $535,000. This is usually just largely due to timing of payables when the district makes payments. And so accordingly, payables are up somewhat as well. Receivables are up 1.3 million this year, that's largely due to the timing of payments from the WISP for ACT 18 revenues and IDA revenues, so we're managing a timing issue in the current year. And then, the largest chunk of your receivables of that 9.49 million is from the state aid from the state of Michigan for your July and August payments this year, is up $8 million of that 9.5 million. On the liability side, accrued payrolls up a little bit. This is what I would call just kind of an accounting entry. So, your salaries and wages, you know what they are year-over-year, but year-end, we have to go through calculation based on the number of days worked by the teachers, the number of full working days in the year, and a percentage of that is put into accrued payrolls for accounting purposes, reverses on the next day and the next year, and that's how, how that, it fluctuates year-over-year, it's something to keep in mind, it's just kind of an accounting entry. Let's see. Again, the other liability is up pretty significantly, and a big, big chunk of this is just due to other funds within the district, about one and a half million dollars. There's also the 147(c)(C) payment, so the state of Michigan provides a big chunk of money to the district that we have to turn around and put right back into the pension fund of the state. And so this year, that went up a good amount as well, again, due to the timing of payments from last year. And that other bucket, there's probably, there's about $735,000 of 147(c)(C) payment. This year's about 1.2 billion dollars, again, just the timing of when the funds are remitted back to the state. So again, cash is up, this liability is up, just kind of a fluctuation towards year-end. And then, the fund balance decreased about $12,000, so largely flat, the general fund was year-over-year. So this slide is the breakout of the general fund revenues, and again, we exclude the mixed 147(c)(C) funds, we kind of look at things system-based year-over-year. The 147(c)(C) money came from the state, you don't get to go spend it on teachers or supplies or anything else in the school district, so we exclude that from our analysis and interpretation here. The revenues are up a little over 2%, and that entire amount can be attributed to state sources and state funding. State revenues were up about 1.3 million, and more than 100% of that was just due to the foundation allowance. So, foundation allowance increases about $238 a student from 2018 to 2019. The amount of about $1.4 billion of additional funding to the district, and so there were some other categorical revenues that were placed down under adjustment. So, I think the takeaway on a slide like this is to understand that you really don't have any control over your revenues, you know, you get what the state gives you, as I commented earlier, the argument made about, you know, the state not, you know, having, putting education first, kind of shows when you look at a slide like this, you know, you have such nominal increases year-over-year in your revenue, and you have, it's a pretty tight, tight amount of money to work with. And again, not a lot of control that the district has, and so they, you know, do the best they can with the money they get. So the general fund expenditures, again, we exclude the 147(c)(C) to retirement money. Another, about a 2% increase in expenditures, about $470,000 increase in salaries and benefits over the prior year, which is about a 1% increase. Capital outlay, there's a little sliver you can't really see in there, that's because a lot of the capital projects that the district incurs are included in other funds, such as capital projects funds, sinking funds. The general fund typically does not have a lot of capital outlay. And then, there's a slight increase in supplies and other general expenses of the district, everything else gets come up into that other bucket, that's about 500 grand, or just a little work bump percent. The other slides. So this is a slide you've been showing for several years, I think even before I started auditing here. So this slide is based on prior year college data, since the current year data hasn't issued by the state yet. This slide really shows for every, you know, if you have $100 that the district spends in expenditures, how much was going into the classroom. And it really shows a good comparison to neighboring school districts, and again, compared to the other neighboring school districts, Selene, the percentage of their expenditures are higher on instructional expenditures. So again, to teachers and to things that are in classroom, well, Selene spent 55 cents of every dollar on the classroom, so it's just something we wanted to highlight here this year. There's a lot of the slide numbers that I used, so we just wanted to spend a minute, try to just bring together, what does all this really mean, and what does this mean going forward? This next slide just shows the several years' history of our general fund revenues, over or under expenditures, basically, you make money any given year, or you spend, well, you brought it in any given year. So in the current year, as Anthony mentioned, we're essentially break even, our current revenue, revenue and expenditures were each approximately 65 million. And that overage or underage in any given year adds to the district's fund balance, which Anthony mentioned a moment briefly ago. As just worth noting, over the last 10 years, we have 10 years of history, this represents a net expenditure over revenue of $830,000. And so we're looking at what that means on the next slide. We take a look at the general fund balance as a percentage of the total unrestricted revenue. So again, just focusing on the fund balance, again, so the fund balance is essentially is the assets minus the liabilities of the district. It essentially represents the annual difference between revenue and expenditure, so every year, that difference adds to the fund balance. Essentially, fund balance serves as a measure of the financial resources available in a fund. It's almost thinking of it like a savings account for the district. So as you mentioned, the fund balance at June 30th, 2019 was roughly about 3.3 million. And, so what fund balance does is it really helps the district deal for unforeseen, excuse me, about 2.8 million per year. So it helps deal with unforeseen financial surprises. So a reasonable level of fund balance helps the district pay bills that aren't expected. So if you have higher-than-expected facility bills, you have unexpected maintenance, fund plan enrollment declines, fund balance helps the district pay bills so the current instructional program can be carried out without disruption in circumstances essentially outside of the district's control. So essentially, the question becomes, well, what's a, prudence or adequate or reasonable level of fund balance? So one way to look at that is how the state essentially looks at fund balance. Back in 2015, the state enacted what they called early warning legislation. This was really designed to identify districts that were showing signs of financial distress. So one way the state would identify a district showing signs of financial distress is if their fund balance is a percentage of the total unrestricted general fund revenue is less than 5% in any of the last two fiscal years. So you can see for 2019, around 5.6%, 2018, around 5.8%. So we are above that state threshold of when they would start to consider perhaps a sign of financial distress, but there isn't a lot of additional push in there. Another way to take a look at fund balance is a percentage of fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. So again, if you think about our fund balance of, let's see, about 2.82 million at the end of the year, divided by our expenditures of 62 million, and it puts you at roughly in that neighborhood of about 5%. The state average at June 30th, 2018, which would be the last year in which this whole financial, rent keeping, so the economy was up 14%. So again, we're above kind of the state definition, but when they start to feel that could be a potential concern, we'll go to the state average. Obviously, fund balance needs to be weighed against the other initiatives and programs within the district, certainly from a fund balance level from a lower end of the threshold from where ideally we'd like to be certain. So with that, we are happy to answer any questions that anybody might have related to, again, the June 30th, 2018 audit.
Jeff, on that last one, the fund balance, how much of a concern is that to you? You see something out of it just a...
Well, it's a, so the MSPO, another group that handles the Michigan School of Work or Officer Association, are a 15% fund balance. So it would be a concern that it is certainly below what generally would be desired. Now, what's the prudent level, I suppose, is a district-by-district decision. I think certainly 5% is lower than we would like to see. The Michigan economy's been strong for several years, but it's not that long ago, and we're actually mid-years of sudden funding. And the concern is that fund balance at that level should there be a slowdown in the near future, it doesn't give the district a lot of time to react, again, if there are any significant unforeseen surprises. And so really, again, if the fund balance, like a rainy day fund, well, how much do you put away for a rainy, rainy day? And as a general rule, we would certainly like to see more than 1%.
Is it a concern that it's gone down for each year for the last four years?
Well, certainly would be a concern it's going down. So the last two years, as Anthony mentioned, so the vast majority of the funding for the district comes from the state, roughly 2/3 of your funding is based on the state foundation allowance, which is determined up in Lansing. So again, local districts have very little ability to control the revenue that comes in. And as we're noting, that for the last two years, those increases have been at 3%, that's been the largest, basically, since the adoption of the proposal back in 1994. So even though percentage increases aren't, a lot of people consider extravagant, so they're the largest we've had, and yet we still only manage to sort of break even essentially. And so the concern is if we go back to more of historic 2% increase, how might these numbers look in that, that environment? And so again, it's, you know, with the proposal that passed back in 94, that, again, with the, kind of really, funding's been below the rate of inflation, and so it's put a tremendous strain on school districts. And the concern is that we've been in a period of Michigan's less than eight years, where the counties were relatively healthy, what's going to happen when the first year, you have a downturn?
I kind of have a follow-up to Dennis's question on the balance. If you look at the districts that you're benchmarking us against for the instruction in the classroom, according to a dollar, do you happen to know the average fund balance across those? I mean, Chelton's probably swinging us regularly Monday, because they are probably closer to 15, I think, but...
I think you're really high.
They're really high. And I know that that would be an ideal, where it's a little 5, 6. Do you know, and...
I don't know if it's out of my head, what those percentages are unfortunately. Final information, it's all over the double, but unfortunately.
It's great to shoot for 15, right? I love that.
All are double at least, including Ann Arbor.
All are double. So, I was guessing around 11 or 12. Something to shoot for.
I think that you can see, though, in that slide, our priorities are in the classroom, and that conversely has the effect of our fund balance, so that financing was too big.
Any foreseeable changes in accounting rules that might be affecting us?
There are some changes that deal, not really in the general fund, it's more on some of the extra funds, like student activity funds, the way those are being counted for are a little bit different, but from a general fund perspective, from just an accounting perspective, no significant changes out there in the horizon.
GSP 84.
Well, I know this has been a bit of a trial by fire for our very own Miranda Ausley, I just want to thank her for all her work in getting us in, in good shape. Thank you, Miranda, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Alright, thank you.
The hazing is done for her, right?
She owns this thing now, it's her.
Action items, can I have a motion to approve the audit report submitted by Assistant Superintendent Ausley? Would you like to discuss your audit report? Yeah, I think that was one of the cleanest reports we've ever had, so we've got you and the whole party. All those in favor, please signify with aye. Those opposed with nay. Hearing none, the motion carries 7-0. General recommended motion to approve the revolution to impose a summer tax levy to collect all annual school property taxes as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Ausley. The move? Collecting money is a good thing.
Yeah. We need to do it?
We will continue to have the summer tax collection.
Any questions? All those in favor, please signify with aye. Those opposed with nay. Hearing none, the motion carries 7-0. General motion to approve this from Total Environmental Services LLC is recommended Nova Environmental to conduct the investigation of Liberty School and allow the $64,550 that is given by direct operations.
I know Mr. Clarice here, I'll touch on a little bit, this is the first action item that you'll see relative to the work here at Liberty School that will begin over the winter break. The first step, as was the first step that our project, this past summer in Liberty, or apartment at the middle school, and then we'll go in and abate certain aspects of this, as I want it to be clear. This is not the form this building had debated many years ago. This is pieces and different mastic that are around and flooring systems. And then again, this is continuing to kind of push down, trying to remove the steam system from this building, so these activities down the tunnels associated with this. We did get several bids on this, and we've worked with Nova in the past to be our consultant for abating, and they've been nice shop for us.
Have we worked with Total Environmental Services before?
We have not worked with Total Environmental Services before. Nova has worked with them on past projects, we did meet with them, and we feel confident that they will be able to do the job in this area. In the past, they've not, in other areas, they've not performed, but in this area, we feel they can perform well, not as they would have to gas or gas lines or something like that, so...
It's pretty straightforward, abating, with exceptions to scaffolding.
The way it'll be done during the winter break or just started?
It'll be done during the winter break in the main administration hub, and then in the gymnasium, that'll be done during spring break, we'll set up a week prior.
So, you know, to be clear, this is, once this abatement occurs, the administrative offices will be no more, our central office or our district office will operate out of community education for a period of about six months. The finance department, HR, and Patty and myself will be kind of scattered around Liberty School, and then the work in the gymnasium will begin around spring break, again, with trying to have everything done by June, so that as families come in and start to register, that area will be ready to go.
All those in favor, please signify with aye. Those opposed with nay. Hearing none, the motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Rex. Discussion item, sixth grade Bring Your Own Device Plus Assistant Superintendent Lock.
Dr. Locks is here, as many of you know, we've moved to a BYOD+ scenario at, at the high school with our freshman class, and indicating that we would like, that we call it plus, Bring Your Own Device.
your own device, but we also want to essentially really encourage them to bring one, if they don't, to have one, that we will provide one for them. So, uh, there's been some conversation about this at the sixth grade level, uh, and implementing at the sixth grade level, so I wanted to have a conversation here tonight about that and learn more.
Thanks for the time tonight. So, right, we were talking about, uh, bringing your own device at the sixth grade level as early as next year, and I saw, uh, we need to talk about that in the next, one thing I want to address first, though, is our conversation with screen majors. Since we saw screen majors, at first we're thinking of as an anti-technology portion, it really isn't. It's more about helping the students find balance with that. And largely, the message with screen major was that we do need to work on students when it comes to their own cell phone usage, social media, sort of the dependency of, of the cell phone device, and thus, um, we don't want the community to think that showing the screen major was a push to say that, um, we shouldn't have, uh, technology usage for our students, because that's a big part of their lives, and it's a really important part of their lives. And, uh, we look at the middle school, Mr. Bees and Mr. Chico have already put in place a policy to better support cell phone usage, which is having a big impact. Uh, at the same time, we want to make sure we have devices for our students as early as sixth grade where they're bringing them on a regular basis, because that really is an important spot where teachers are saying that it is important for students to have a keyboard, we are typing more, creating papers, and we want to make sure that students have access to that. So the BYOD plan at sixth grade is a strategy to make sure that we can get to one-to-one register. And as Plan Plan already mentioned earlier, 65 percent, 65 cents on the dollar is already going to our instructional program. That's way more than, that's more than the other districts in Russian County, and this is a strategy that we can make sure that some of our funding isn't only going for devices, it's moving into other parts of the instructional model as well. So with that said, what is it, beginning with next school year, there will be an expectation for sixth grade students to bring their own device with a keyboard, a Chromebook, laptop, or so forth, through school on a daily basis. And Mr. Bees is going to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, the why is simple for our proposal for our sixth graders. Um, a sixth grader's Chromebook, their laptop, is really the, the critical piece for their preparation for Selene High School. That's our mission at Selene Middle School, is to get kids ready for the high school, and this tool will certainly be a part of that. Um, it's important for their preparation for post-secondary options as well, and ultimately employment. We're all sitting here tonight with our laptops and our devices and making sure that they're ready for that. So employment and careers, that will certainly be a part of it. The other piece that I want to highlight on my slide is, we've seen many of our students that bring their own devices or that are assigned a device through our summit program, they're responsible. If you're invested in something, if you purchase something, you're likely to take more care of it, better care of it. So, uh, we've seen that as well. We're not as likely to take a computer out of a cart and pick off a key or break a screen. So we want to make sure that our students are ready, not only sub to the eighth grade, but really hit the ground running in the sixth grade. Mr. Chico is going to continue with the why.
Yeah, so I, I think this really fits well with the movement of our district. If we look at, for example, the World Economic Forum, the Forbes Top 10 list, those things that inform the compass for us, our student attributes, being future focused, right? Kind of this approach of BYOD for our sixth graders aligns with the direction where our district and where we have been going and where we'd want to go.
Continuing on, by having students bring those devices in, it does free up funding for other areas. Some of the, uh, programs that we are looking to put in place include GoGuardian, this is a security and safety feature that would allow for our teachers to be monitoring the usage of students in their Gmail accounts and using the devices. In addition, programs like NoRed Inc. to support grammar, UZELA, current events, actively learn, we chart all these apps that we can put in place, but those are expensive, and we want to make sure that our kids have access to all of those. Thus, by not being in the business of constantly replacing devices, this will help free up more funding for that to support this structure. So the how, uh, we partnered with Inacom, they're one of our technology vendors, and they do a great job of providing a very low-cost Chromebook, so much so that when we rolled out this at the ninth grade level, we had lots of people across the district say, hey, can we get one of those Chromebooks for our kids at any level? And the answer is yes, because you're getting a low-cost option, under $200, that's a robust option. And that's, that's great, because, um, you know, there's a lot of different Chromebook options out there, and some of them aren't, uh, very worthwhile. This is a, this is a very good option. In addition, with the high school level, we've had great success in saying that any family wants assistance for any, and we're not checking free and reduced lunch debt. We are simply saying for parents, if you want support getting one of these Chromebooks, you're simply filling out a link, the district is providing a device, free of charge, not labeled with district labels all over it, and we hand that to the student, and it's theirs to keep. And there's no questions asked. We want to make sure that, um, students all have a similar-looking device, so we're making sure that they're being supported as well. Mr. Chico is going to talk about this next slide.
Yeah, and so, you know, certainly commonly for our sixth grade students, um, teachers will, will ask families, right, to provide certain supplies, binders, folders, those types of things. I think what we're thinking about here is that really the ask for the device is, is the ask for the supply. So instead of, um, going to families and saying they need to provide these binders and folders and these other materials, what we're saying is we would like to provide a device, and that's our ask.
Right, so for the three years of the middle school, that's the only ask, and then the curriculum department would purchase binders, folders, colored pencils, and make sure that our middle school teachers all have all of those materials, so that they're not asking families to bring those, and the only ask is the device. So what about our ninth grade BYOD plan? We currently have that in place, and for the last two years, we've been asking the ninth grade class to also bring a new device. And so that is in place, it's going well, and thus, by continuing on with this trajectory, we do start with sixth grade next year, in two years, we will have a path that we have one-to-one Chromebook Android device access from sixth through 12th grade. There won't be an ask for elementary kids to do this. We'll make sure we have all the funding to make sure that we're supporting our elementary students, but by moving in this direction, we will have a clean path from sixth to 12th grade with a low-priced option for students, and we are feeling like this is a really good direction, so that we are freeing up other additional funding to make sure we're continuing with strong supports to the educational program. So our communication in white. We want to make sure that all our incoming sixth grade parents understand what's happening, and so we will be communicating out in news and notes and direct email messages that, um, Mr. Bees and Mr. Chico will be sending out to make sure that our sixth grade parents, our incoming sixth grade parents are aware. And then we will have a forum on April 13th to discuss this. We'll make sure that we continue the communication and make sure that all the questions are being answered as well as we forebode this, because that was a key to the success of the ninth grade plan, to make sure that we had parents who were able to ask all those questions, and for anything that we needed to know about, we will find the answers for that. Questions for all of you?
I, oh, so do I. I, I've never had a laptop last more than four years. Uh, so, Mr. Beesoo and, and company, are we expecting these machines to last the kids the whole eight, seven, eight years of their high school experience from sixth grade? Or will you, will we be expecting them to sort of upgrade by the time they get to ninth or 10th grade?
I certainly think that we have renewal at, at the ninth grade level, that would be another natural transition to take a look at a different device, update the device, make sure that it's ready for Selene High School's...
Will you, but...
But I'll add to that, I've talked to Troy Wilson quite extensively about this, and he says it depends. They monitor students' devices, and some students keep them in great shape, and they easily last six years. And then, and he's just using his own son as an example. Um, son keeps it in great shape, and the plan is that they'll continue on, he's had a Chromebook since middle school, and will continue on with that usage through the high school, and then as he's getting ready to transition to college, he's going to purchase him another one for junior year and then be able to take him into college with it. So it really is dependent on, on use.
Use.
And so there is the opportunity for students to have it last longer than four years, it depends. And I've asked extensively Troy, you know, will, will that happen? He says it is, it does depend, but there'll always be that low-cost option if a parent does say, all right, we're starting in sixth grade, and then we want to, in 10th grade, get an upgrade, or 11th grade to get it.
And do you recommend that the parents have insurance, uh, themselves, just carry their own insurance, or does a district carry that?
We don't recommend it, because the device isn't that expensive, and the insurance is 50 or 60 dollars.
$150 device.
A $199 device, we don't feel like...
I, I know, I purchased it having, uh, seen, uh, my daughter's Chromebook die in the first week. Well, it was, it was, uh, it was, um, it was more homicide than...
Oh, who?
Well, was it, no, was it? She smashed, she smashed, I said it in a nice way, she smashed it into a wall, it was a big oops, and, and I, so I bought the insurance. But anyway, um, I want to ask about the cows, the computers on wheels, do we, are we going to be able to repurpose those, or like put them permanently in, in somewhere?
Yeah, we do, and even with this plan, all of the classrooms have seven Chromebooks in the back of the classroom, because what happens is, students are bringing their devices, but they forget to charge them, they forget one, it might not be working that day, where they have to have the tech team do a quick repair. So those devices are still getting pushed into the classroom.
Sure.
And, and thus, we will always have those additional supports if kids forget, or they need a charge or anything.
And, and the last question is, is, this is a softball question. We used to call it BYOD, we call it BYOV, bring your own virus. Uh, is it, have we managed to lock down the security on these machines when they attach to the network? Uh, have we seen any issues, or we haven't?
Yeah, we're not seeing issues there from us, because it's really just using the internet, it doesn't carry all the viruses.
We have adjusted our, you know, as Troy, I think, mentioned last time he was here, we have changed our web filter onto a thing called Securely, run through the I C S. We have been trying to keep up to date on our filters, um, in an effort to, to prevent a variety of things, but as we saw with some, you know, spam emails coming in through the, even through the board loop, you know, it's...
Yeah. Even the, even the big kids can open the wrong link. All right. Thank, thank you very much for answering my questions, I appreciate it.
I had a question. Um, so we have, you said there's certain software programs that you're going to be using for the kids for grammar and, you know, those kinds of things. Are those programs that they're going to have available to them when they go on to college or other places that, you know, they're not going to get used to something and then not have access to it in the real world, are they, or, you know?
Most, most of the universities do have a program like that, where you use, where you use those programs, and they do, maybe those kind of check, they check for plagiarism too. But most, all the universities have, have those kind of programs.
Okay.
So I think they will expect to see those later, too.
Good.
The, um, and it came up in the focus group that Evan and I were in, the GoGuardian, which is kind of a monitoring system. Um, there, it was interesting to have some conversation with, uh, middle school students who said that GoGuardian, depending on, I think, how they log in, can, can also follow them home, in a sense, and so we would need to kind of work through that. I mean, it was funny, and Evan said that at high school a couple of times, depending, again, how they go in them, so we'll have to work through that.
We want to give our teachers the tools to, and that's been in fact, at our least, to ensure our students are safe on the kids.
So, um, question about, uh, so when you implement this, this will also be the seventh and eighth grade for that first year, right?
No, it would just be sixth grade, and then those devices that are now in the sixth grade rooms will move to seventh and eighth, which will allow seventh and eighth to go one-to-one in the first year.
But now with their own device?
Only be the sixth grade purchases.
Okay.
Or, or, or bringing one that they already have.
Here, could you choose to buy one, even if there was seventh grade student?
They, they could, yeah, yeah, they could, they could. And that, and that's what ended up happening at the high school, and a lot of people caught wind of that, and they said, all right, my, my child's not a ninth grader, but, you know, I want to get, I want to get him a Chromebook for $199, because right now, they're using a laptop that we're letting our child borrow, it's $800, and we feel like that's not, that's not, you know, we don't want that, that going around, it seems like that, that's just a good value.
Will you be communicating to the seventh grade and eighth grade parents of that option instead of catching wind of it, but actually let them know that that's an option for them to purchase?
Yeah, we, we, we can do that. I will say, when we rolled out the ninth grade option, we didn't do that for the rest of the high school, but because it became popular and people were saying, well, that's something we want to purchase, Inacom is, um, fully able to support as many as possible. And it's nice, too, because they mail it right to the address. We were not in the business of having to get all the computers here and distribute them, they just mail it to your house.
It's nice that you're leveraging, though, the size to get a good price for the community.
Yeah.
If they don't want to buy through Inacom, is there like a list of suggested devices that work best?
Um, there isn't, because we feel like this is the best option, and it's the lowest cost that we're finding. They can buy other devices through Inacom, I mean, they, they have a list of different things, but, but we're, we're promoting this device, because we feel like it's durable, it's the best option, and that, um, it's really what the students need. We're not trying to upsell something that they don't need.
So, see, then, if they're bringing their own device, you'll have to reconcile, if they don't purchase the Inacom version, you'll have to reconcile, uh, capacity, memory, you'll, you'll have a list of requirements. Um, speaking as an incoming sixth grade parent, I have two Chromebooks already, they'll be bringing their own, so you will have a list of, okay, they're not going to buy from Inacom, this is what they need to have for the minimum level of requirements.
Troy, Troy will have that, and we've only run into a few rare circumstances where something didn't work, somebody was bringing something in, we had to have them, you know, upgrade their system in order to...
Had to do with the megahertz of our Wi-Fi.
We will, we will show what the minimum requirement is.
Right. I had a few other questions. Um, the, the first question is, will this affect the Wi-Fi in the building? Um, I, I think we know that the middle school is, is kind of dense in the middle, um, and getting a signal in that building at all times is not possible. Um, will more devices in the school affect bandwidth or affect anything that we should be aware of from a financial perspective with having to upgrade something with infrastructure?
Troy feels like the Wi-Fi, um, the strength is, is going to work really well with this, and is not concerned about that.
Well, we do have, but we have an allocation this coming summer for infrastructure improvements at both buildings. I don't know if it's specific to BYOD, though.
Yeah, I just, how many more devices? I don't know.
Yeah, even currently, we're, we're not one, but we're very close to two. There are a ton of devices in our building. It's really...
What I'm interested in is if we have, you know, what, what's our, our heritage is 724 right now, half of that is fifth grade coming up, right? If we have that many more Chromebooks in the system, is it going to be okay?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know, we have to look at, is the usage going to go up so significantly that it's going to tax the system? I don't, it's a pretty question.
Is there still, I mean, what's happening now, is they're, they're figuring out ways to shuffle carts around so that they're able to use it when they want, and that isn't sustainable, but I don't know that we're going to see usage dramatically in pretty soon.
It's something to keep an eye on, because it could...
We're, we're also aware that we don't want students on the devices all the time, so there will be that balance.
It'll be a little cyclical. Um, also coming from a financial perspective, uh, had a question about the apps that you mentioned there and the financial aid piece. So the apps that you had up there, are those annual recurring revenue for those companies? So it's a license, an annual license that we would be paying out like we spurt?
Yes.
Okay.
It's like that, it's, it's an annual...
Okay, so, and, and we're familiar with that line item on the budget and how much that costs yearly, so what I'm trying to reconcile is the balance between new apps that we were purchasing on, on that annual licensing model, how much more is that going to take away from the budget, and how much are the devices going to bring it down, right? So if you have financial aid and you have a statement that anyone can get a Chromebook, which is excellent, like that, um, but there's a no questions asked kind of scenario, are we going to be paying for both a lot of Chromebooks and a lot of apps? Because some of those apps are very expensive.
Well, we're basing it on what we've seen over the last two years, and we have a certain amount allocated for the number of, um, free Chromebooks that we're passing out, and we've been right in that, um, that budget range. In other words, around 30 to 40 that we are providing, and that has, that has already been budgeted.
It's been based on, yeah. It's been based on, yeah.
And we haven't, haven't had this extreme.
It's just something to think about, right? If you have a no questions asked financial aid policy and then you get 100 and we allocate for 30, that's a huge difference.
Right. And we were, we were thinking, oh, there's a chance that would happen, but in two years at the high school, that has not. So you're right, we are, we are thinking that we have a similar number, maybe a little bit more with the notion that there's some parents that might have an incoming sixth grader and an incoming ninth grader.
Right. If you expand it, that's what we worry about.
We will budget for that.
And then my other general question is, and maybe students can answer this. Do, do upperclassmen use Chromebooks still? So if Evan, you can answer this for me. If you purchase a, you have a Mac, you have a, you have a Chromebook, you don't have a Mac.
No, I do not personally use a Chromebook.
I can't see what you have.
The last time, well, I do for one thing and that is printing. So I know currently we have a system where in order to print from the media, from a media center printer, you need to log in from, I believe it's one of the apps, but I know it's an app that's paid for by the school. And you can't do that from a personal device. You have to use a school-issued device in order to actually do that. So outside of that, I haven't used one in about two or three years.
You haven't used a Chromebook?
Yeah.
Because I'm just thinking about financial burden on families also. So if you have them purchasing ones, excuse me, then you're purchasing one in ninth grade. Evan, as a senior, hasn't used it in two years. I'm just thinking about the.
Now, I mean, to be fair, I do use it. My personal, like, computer often, which would constitute for a Chromebook for a student that doesn't have one of, like, their own computer, so.
What do you use?
I use this Mac right here.
So right there, and that's fine too. If parents want to provide a Mac or a Dell or HP, then that's okay as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just thinking of overall cost.
Good question.
We did have a student did a survey about three years ago about what device they preferred and it was a Mac, an iPad or a Chromebook. And Chromebook dominated. I was surprised by that at the time.
I'd be surprised.
A ninth grader bought a Chromebook.
Yeah. Yeah, the Chromebooks have a little more cachet than I thought they would, to be honest. I don't, I'm not sure.
It'd be an interesting thing to keep, keep looking at. Trends change, technology is changing.
I have been asking some of the kids in college what they use in Chromebooks.
Really? I've never seen a Chromebook in, in, in college in, in people that I work.
I was surprised too.
I, yeah, I'm surprised too. Okay. Thanks. All right. Lots of questions.
Oh, that's good.
Part of, part of the Chromebooks is they use the online Google Docs and stuff like that. So they don't have programs. They use Google.
Why use all that through my Mac though?
Yeah.
I would, and I would never use it. I can drive a full load on Mac. Let's be honest.
Board Finance Committee update, trustee Valenti?
Yes, we had our meeting November 4th. We got a sneak preview of the audit update and we were able to review that. We also went over updates on our enrollment and staffing update. We are going to be having an amendment to our fiscal year 2020 budget. I believe that's coming up next meeting. We'll have that.
Which is when?
Our next, I'm sorry, our next full board meeting.
Oh, oh, sure.
We were also continued to discuss new revenue ideas. And so we're looking at that as well as analyzing the numbers as they come through. Next meeting will be the.
December 2nd.
December 2nd. Great. That's it.
Board Policy Committee update, secretary McVeigh.
Thank you. I'd like to merge C and D together or I'll just, so, Policy Committee met on October 29th and we discussed several items, one of which is that we had a conversation about the language for the controversial issues policy. And President Heineck made some attempts to change the language that are still in limbo. We believe that more community groups should be engaged in refining this language, including the DEI Advisory Group, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Group. And we're going to be bringing that up at some point. Superintendent Grayden also made some proposals for a new policy on the addition and deletion of interscholastic district subsidized sports. And I think this is a policy we're greatly in need of. We're going to meet again on November 25th at 5:45 here in the boardroom. But one of the other big things we discussed rolls into Section D here in our agenda and it was Policy 2410. This is updated language from Neola that requires us to insert Policy 2410, and we never had it before, which is a prohibition against staff and board members from referring a student for an abortion. All districts across the state are required to have this policy and use exactly the same language in our other policies. And you'll see we have other, two or three other policies, two policies. Policy 2414, Reproductive Health and Family Planning, and Policy 2418, Sex Education. Both of those, the language has had to have been adjusted to incorporate this new language from Neola, which is coming from the state and is a requirement from, from the state. So thus endeth my two reports. Are there any questions? No?
Are we combining C and D?
Yep, yep.
We're going to discuss D now.
Well, we can discuss, there's not really much, not really much to discuss in C unless you, I'll talk about anything. Yes, ma'am? What's your question?
My question was about D.
D, go ahead, let's go ahead with D.
I was just wondering if you could define, so if we look at 2410, we talk about member of the board, comma, or employee of the board, whom does the state mean by employee of the board?
The state would determine as everyone who is employed by slinging schools.
Staff, member of slinging area schools. Because I guess we think of, I've, I've never seen that language before. I really think of slinging area school staff as employees of the board.
Yeah, it's kind of, I think it's the Neola vernacular. Typically you would say member of the board, although this may also be coming, maybe how it was stated in the MCL as well.
And that other, the older language was any officer, agent, or employee of the Board of Education. So they've just broadened that to include seven more people. That would be us. So, the board. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it was just, it was, it was phrased a little awkwardly.
Yeah, it was.
From the state. I know you were taking the language from the state and it did appear in other, it appeared in the 2414 Reproductive Health and Family Planning one as well. So I just wanted to be clear.
And just for clarification, since we've talked about almost every aspect of it, let me just read the whole sentence. Additionally, any school official, comma, member of the board, comma, or employee of the board who is not the parent or legal guardian of the student involved is prohibited from referring, et cetera. So that was one of those that clarificate, clarifying issues that I just want to make sure you all had on the record.
So basically, anyone receiving pay from slinging areas.
Right.
Unless you're the parent or guardian.
Yeah, that wasn't really clarified before. So with that language, they wanted to, the parental piece, because it could be, you know, they could be working in the high school, the, the parent, and then, yeah.
There used to be large financial penalties for people that violated this policy. That was one thing they stripped out, so.
Yeah, it was vetoed by, what, my?
Yeah.
Well, I, I thought the fine was for the districts who didn't have this policy written in.
Well, there was a fine for that, but there was also penalties for anyone who violated this policy itself.
Right.
That attacked or stayed any.
Yeah.
Any more questions about the, the work of the Policy Committee? No?
I had also about 2418 Sex Education. So in this one, it states prior review for parents of content. But the other one said specifically, but except for exams, it says not for tests. And I was wondering why this one didn't say tests as well. So tests.
Where are you looking? Is that any, this is nothing that's changed in the policy?
Yeah, I don't know, and Steve, I don't know that we give, for sex education curriculum, that we give assessments for exams.
Guess I'm just not there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure it was the same type of language.
In addition, did you, Superintendent Grayden, want to talk about some of the other, we're on to E now. I assume we're on E.
Yes.
Yeah, with, with E, the addition and deletion of interscholastic district subsidized sports. This is a policy that exists in our MASB book. We have not pulled it over to, to you Neola yet, but the conversation was brought to the forefront as we've received a request from a current non-parent funded team to move to district-supported team. And we have a window until the end of July, or January to, to assess that. So I wanted to share this policy and the ad reg that goes with it. I think it's one that we certainly will use as the basis for our criteria moving forward, but some updates are needed. We want to make sure we imply it, but it's specific to Title IX and some other things as we look to how we're going to handle this request. So it's important for us to, to know, this is kind of the basis of it.
Does Neola have any language similar to this? Nothing at all?
It's all state laws that govern this policy.
So this would be an option, I would, once we get through this process, I would think we would want to put it into our policy book, but not all.
Right. And we're going to be working on this until, till the end of this year.
Yeah.
Good. All right, well, and I appreciate that because the original language was very thin at best. Great. No other questions?
Board Self-Evaluation. Thank you, everyone, for giving out the MASB, filling out our Board Self-Evaluation. I included in the packet was a five-year scoring review of our scores. We scored lower this year on board leadership and superintendent board relations, the first and last category. I don't know if that's significant, but everything in between, we scored near or at our other scores from previous years. So we will take a closer look at both of those, either in our January meeting or our January retreat, more likely. So I will get some more information out about that. But overall, it was a good report. Again, MASB typically gives us fairly good overall ratings for our Board Self-Evaluations.
I think as boards go, we're pretty functional as, as opposed to dysfunctional.
Is true. The following items are offered up as part of the Consent Agenda. Kind of a motion authorized items on this Consent Agenda. A, Approval of the Regular Board of Education Meeting Minutes of October 22nd, 2019. B, Approval of the Board Policy Committee Meeting Minutes of October 29th, 2019. C, Approval of the Board Finance Committee Meeting Minutes of November 4th, 2019. D, Approval of Payment of the General Fund Accounts Payable of November 12th, 2019 in the amount of $1,402,1032. E, Approval of Payment of Bond Fund Series II Accounts Payable of November 12th, 2019 in the amount of $187,453.14. Oh wait. Yep, that's a comma and a period. F, Receive and File the November Curriculum Finance and Human Resources Reports. G, Approval of the Following Field Trips as Requested by Superintendent Grayden. Field Trip Number 52, The German Club Trip to Chicago, Illinois, on December 6th, 2019. H, Approval of the Early Graduation Request as Submitted by Superintendent Grayden. And I, Approval of the Student Reinstatement Petition Committee as Submitted by Superintendent Grayden.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Those opposed with nay. Nary none, the motion carries 7-0. November 26th will be our next meeting. We will have.
Budget Amendment.
Budget Amendment.
Evaluation Meeting.
Superintendent Evaluation Meeting. A Safety and Security.
Closed session. Our first, it'll be our first closed session with the new information from our, our safety and security plan, so.
And anything else that happens between then and that. This is the second public comment and it'll finish off the list. Viva Rosenfeld is.
Hi. I want to thank you all for your hard work, especially taking a stance to include and support LGBTQ kids in the school. I represent the majority of the Slane community, which actually supports diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools. A number of us have been attending meetings and for the most part, we've been observing and not making noise. And this is partially because engaging in this debate over trans kids, LGBTQ kids itself is harmful to these students. It singles them out and it stigmatizes them. So I'd like to talk about some of the language used in the controversial issues policy. It needs, controversial needs to be eliminated, at least in the context of LGBTQ kids. If you're going to use a word, use a word that the Michigan Association of School Board has used. They use sensitive issues or you can use sensitive topics. Again, calling a child a controversial issue is not just okay, but it degrades them. I mean, ultimately, it would be nice if you eliminated the whole opt-out because people walking out of a classroom when you are reading a book about a gay family or a trans kid, again, is completely stigmatizing as, as if they don't exist in this world and those families and those children do exist. Just want to, you know, reiterate how important it is to use best practices. In June, I took Silent Crisis. Dr. Lottz was also at this training that WISD does. Extremely helpful packet of information here. I hope to share some of it with you, but it's a lot of stuff. If you haven't taken it, I really urge you to take it. It's put on by the Michigan Department of Education and obviously supported by, you know. So again, you know, realize that our LGBTQ kids need support and if Michigan Department of Education is asking you to support them, then you should too.
My name is John Leiter. We have his pronouns and I just want to make this really quick and I just want to say I support you guys in moving forward in policies that include trans kids and LGBTQ kids. Thank you.
Oliver?
I have a letter to read because my friend wasn't able to attend the full meeting, so I'll go and pull that up. Then I'll be speaking. All right, so here's this letter. Hello there. My name's Oliver. I'm not sure if anyone remembers me, but I spoke at another meeting and nobody could hear me and my hands were shaking. I was kind of shy. I honestly really thought that might be the last time I would really have to stand up for myself like that, but apparently not. I guess, I just thought people were getting more accepting here. It's a bit ridiculous that I have to keep doing this, but I will. Seriously, just love everyone and be accepting. It's not that hard. Transgender people aren't spooky monsters that want to take your bathrooms away from you. Seriously, I just want to be more humble. Nothing bad will happen if I use the men's bathroom. I just might feel, look a lot more confident myself, but that's not the big deal. I also want everybody here to know that no matter what anyone at this meeting says, I love everyone here and so many others do. I love everyone, seriously. I just wish more people would do the same. And that's the end of the letter, but we really appreciate your decision to go ahead and meet you. Thank you.
Abby, Abby, you're up next. We might as well say.
Okay. Well, then we have my speech. So my name's Abby Droick. My pronouns are she for hers and I'm the leader, one of the leaders of Slane High Schools. for hers, and I'm the leader, one of the leaders of Slane High School's social justice and advocacy club. I came here tonight for several reasons. One, because Mr. Lamm was raising a disc class, and two, one, I'm kind of upset for why I'm here. You guys have heard me speak several times in support of you guys. I, I'm usually a very nice person, and I like to think that I am, but after having to come and defend you guys so many times against what some other parents are saying, I just want you to, I think you guys are standing strong. I have a lot of transgender friends who are struggling with accepting themselves and then having to deal with other voices and other people calling them out for being who they are. It's a big issue, and they have to deal with it every day in their lives. And having that policy to back them up and protect them and keep their identities private, it is no parent's business who a child is unless there is a safety issue. But trans kids are just like any other kids, and they don't have to be outed. That one poor kid at middle school who was outed, who created this big fuss that's here today, I can't imagine the stress and fear that must be going through them, because this is all sparked up again because some specific parents are complaining about lack of dreams. Kids here need to be protected, trans or not. And, you know, we have to have the policies that include everyone. Often, people of privilege, white, cisgender, heterosexual, when they have to share privileges and rights, they feel like they're being taken away from. Often here, people kept saying that, you know, if trans kids get rights, then our rights would be infringed upon. That's not true. You are just, the issue is that people need to share, and it's not like you're going to lose any. It's just someone else is finally getting to the same level as you, just as much as you and both of, and all of them deserve. Everyone deserves equal rights. It's just some people need that extra protection because of the ways society thinks of them. And so I'm really grateful for the steps the board is taking. It means a lot to me, it means a lot to other people too, and I hope I don't have to come here to defend you guys again, because I wish other parents would listen to me, and I don't want to know what to do, but I try to be sensible every day, and I know you guys are too. So, you know.
Brianna House-Bolt?
What was the name of your student?
Brianna?
It's Brenna.
Brenna, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Brenna. I wanted to really quickly talk about a topic that not many people have talked about today at all. It is sex education. I feel as though we don't have as many options and as much knowledge about everything as we really should, especially in high schools where a lot of things are happening that you don't really want people to be doing. But I feel like sex education needs to be required, of course, especially in health, and currently it is not that required. Okay. I'd like to finish with a quote by Dr. Seuss. A person's a person no matter how small, but in that, in this case, it's a person's a person no matter what. Thank you.
Michael Rodriguez?
Hello, I am a senior at Slane High School. My name is Michael Rodriguez, and I would just like to say that I'm very thankful for all of the opportunities that I've been given. I'm thankful for the classes that are being presented such as the, what we saw a presentation on earlier, the Exploring Racial Ethnicity class, and a class I'm starting next week called Approaching Asia. I like that we are including topics of diversity into our curriculum, and I hope that we can continue to do that. I also appreciate that our school has made steps to be inclusive of everyone, and I just would like to say that I really appreciate what's being done right now. Thank you.
Michael Davis?
So hi, I'm Michael Davis. I was just prompted to come up here and talk, so I'm still trying to find where exactly I'm standing on this issue, but, but I will fully acknowledge the LGBTQ community and their, they have their rights, and that they have, they have, they're allowed to do certain things. But there is experience that happened to me that I have to tell you guys about. On my tables in history, there are two girls who have this kind of lesbian relationship between each other that's very loose, and anytime they would do something, I would look away or something, because I don't fully approve of those kind of actions. I acknowledge that they have feelings, and that's totally okay, but I don't, like, I don't know how to say this, but I'm not, I'm not going to support them with those, I'm not going to support those action-specific. I still support them as a person. They are someone who can do many great things, but what I would do is I'd look away. And then at one point, they were just cooking and everything, and they asked, I asked, okay, they were just making comments about me that I didn't really like. And they had, I asked them, if you want me to go away, just tell me to go away, and they said, yes, go away, move to another table, in discreet seating. So the next day, I sat somewhere else, and he's still sitting there. And I brought this to my counselor, and they brought me to the, I can't even remember his name, but he was the conflict manager. We got together, we resolved the conflict, and everything's been fine. But I feel like that was my religious standpoint, that I'm not going to help them with their relationship with each other as a lesbian, but I still respect them as human. But they basically said, because I'm not with the new plan going forward, that I can't be their friends, even though I still want to be their friends. And so I feel like there's so much effort going into making the LGBTQ community get where they're supposed to be, but right now, in the high school, a lot of times I'm seeing someone who will say, oh, I'm gay, and instantly they'll have more friends, and people will be supportive of them, because they don't want to think that they, they don't want to be the people who are throwing them down. And so I still fully support people, and that they have, they have their rights, but I don't want to be part of the conflict of, well, you're either supporting me or not supporting me. I'm not just going to choose either. I'm going to choose your side if you're trying to make a life decision, but I'm not going to support you if you're trying to say, I won't marry gay. But I'll say I want to try to be your friend. So people, I've noticed that people are just not, they're kind of against me with my religious standpoint, saying I'm not who I should be, and I should get with the program, but I feel like there should, I need to be protected in a way, those as well. So, thank you for your time. This education, I did an amazing education in Slane since I moved here, and I really love it, but it's just, this thing that's happened that I want to say goodbye from, but I can't. So, thank you for your time.
Sarah Wees? Sarah?
Hi, my name is Sarah Wees, and for those who don't know, I am a first-year teacher at Slane High School, where I teach English. Apologize for my snow day outfit. I was recently taken a call here by my students, saying that I should come to see what was happening. I'm very thankful to be a member of the Slane community, especially because I am someone who proudly identifies as queer. I want to thank you all very much for the policies that you have enacted to support all of our students and to affirm their identities. These are policies that did not exist when I was in school, and I, they were, those lack of, those policies lack of existence. Sorry, I didn't expect you to say that about this. Having those policies not exist kept me in the closet for a while. It kept me questioning myself for a while, and it made me, it put me in a position where I couldn't be honest about who I was. And so again, thank you all for your support of students, for support of all students. I have a bunch of statistics in front of me about trans youth and how we need to affirm their identities based on, and this amounts of research by the American Psychiatry, Psychiatric Association, the American Academy for Pediatrics, but honestly, right now, the only thing that I can actually bear myself to say is thank you all so much. I support you all endlessly for this courage and for doing what is right. Thank you.
Darcy?
Different topic, so.
I'm a little sad, I'm going to take like a non-educative turn from the conversation. I have a tour of a financial question, and I realize that perhaps that can be answered at this moment. So, you know, given that Slane draws students from not only the city, but I count, I think, six townships in the area, I'm wondering if there are any established channels with these taxing bodies about the state of our finances or our situation? And I ask that, that question is coming from, that I have noticed a lot of tax abatements going out to businesses, sometimes repeatedly, which draws out our cash. And if we don't have those channels, I'm going to realize we've got no authority over any of these taxing bodies, and we're grateful for what we got, but if those channels don't exist, if there's the possibility of opening them up just to let them know where we are, perhaps in our ways to say where they're at in Dexter and Chelsea. So that's my question. A couple other things I just wanted to say was, Michael, my laptop is six years old and going strong. I don't know what you're doing to your technology.
I work it hard.
Dude, don't lie. And speaking of technology, it did go to pre-nagers, a very involved parent asked a very insightful question, which is, why do the kids have their burgers at lunch? I thought, oh, because it's not, you know, right now, they put them in their lockers for the day, and the eight burgers for Fridays can have them at lunch, and maybe we have like a tech-free Friday, or that's how. Just so that there's going to be each other in the eye and having a conversation that's not on their, so my thoughts.
The next meeting of the Board of Education will be held on November 26th, 2019, 6:30 PM here in the Liberty School Boardroom. We will have a closed session, and again, there will be no action taken out of that closed session. Kind of a recommended motion to enter closed session of the Board of Education at 8:55 PM with the intent to reopen, re-enter open session at 9:30 PM for the purpose of considering the purchase or lease of property, Section 8D. This is a roll call vote. Trustee Austin?
Aye.
Trustee Eastep?
Aye.
For President Heineck is aye. Secretary McBay?
Aye.
Trustee, or Vice President Bonds?
Aye.
Trustee Steben?
Aye.
Trustee Valenti?
Aye.
Aye. So we will be in closed session in three minutes.
That's how long I'll have to go to the bathroom.
Can this be a public?
Yes, it is. In fact, it'll have, it's mandatory to be posted, so.
Oh, my goodness.